And we're live. Good evening and welcome to the February 9th, 2021 Meeting of the Stowe Board of Selectmen. With me here in person today, I have Jim Salvi and Courtney Fresser, and we have Megan Birch-McMichael and Ellen Sturgis joining us remotely. Hello, Megan and Ellen. Hopefully you're having fun.
Hi.
And we also have Denise Demkoski, who's our town administrator and keeping us keeping us going here. So, first order of business is public input. Do we have anyone who would like to make any comments on something that we don't have on the agenda? Either wave at me or raise your virtual hand.
Ellen.
Well, Linda just texted, she's having trouble getting on, and she wanted to remind people two things about the census. The town census has been nailed out. If people are confused about the town census versus the federal census, we do this every year, and she asked you to get it back quickly. And nomination papers will be available very soon for the town elections come spring, and you should watch the website for the date.
Thank you, Ellen. Megan.
Hi, I just, I wanted to really quickly, I've been doing a lot of volunteer work with the Stowe Food Pantry over the last couple of years, and I just kind of wanted to remind everyone, if you go to stowfoodpantry.com, they are accepting monetary donations right now, and if anybody wants to volunteer, there is more information about that on their, on the website. And so I just, I really, um, people, I'm sure if you watch the news, are seeing that people are becoming more food insecure right now. And so if anyone is able to help out, I would just want to put a plug in for that. Thank you.
Any more public input? All right. Moving on, Chairman's comments. First off, talking to our new, new Chief of Police, Mike Solisi today. He told me that there were still two slots open for the for the Citizens Police Academy that he's going to be running. It starts, I believe, next week, a week from Wednesday. But there are still two slots open, and you can probably find out information on the police webpage. Ellen stole my thunder about mentioning the town census, but I will catch up with. You can also license your dog when you send in the census. And one of the things I did want to mention to avoid any confusion, when the census was sent out, there was a note that was put in there saying that the town meeting was on May 3rd. As you guys all recall here, we moved it to the 22nd, so it was, the paperwork was printed before we ended up choosing a new date for it, so it's a regrettable error, but easily fixed. Obviously, we've had a lot of snow lately, and I'm sure some people are less than happy about snow ending up in their driveways. Believe me, I think I get more than usual being a member of the Board of Selectmen. But please be please be patient, and please take care of the snow, and please, please do not put it back into the roadway. The Highway Department is working very hard to try to keep our streets clean and safe. And, you know, it, they do the best job they can, and they do a great job. And lastly, it's George Schultz, who was served as Secretary of State under Ronald Reagan, and held three top positions under Richard Nixon, the Secretary of Labor, Director of Office Management Budget, and Secretary of the Treasury, died on Saturday, this past Saturday. He was 100 years old. What you may not know is Mr. Schultz was actually a resident of Stowe for a while, and for a few months, a member of the Board of Selectmen here in town. I request a moment of silence for one of our past selectmen. Thank you. And there's a point of interest, back then, the selectmen were actually paid. He may, he only served about six months in 1955, and he was paid the sum of $72 for his service. So, he ended up resigning partway through his term, and they actually had a special election afterwards. I think he went on to greater things. Next up, we have a couple of appointments. And what I'm going to do is, these are appointments that have been requested by the Chief of Police. The first one is to appoint Officer Luke Dizago to the position of Police Prosecutor. And the second one is the promotion of Darren Train to the position of Police Lieutenant. And Chief Solisi, are you on there somewhere?
I am.
You are? If you would like to give us a brief version of what you're trying to accomplish, we here have the letters that you've submitted, but I think people would like to know from you.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. So, for the first position, it's going to be for our Police Prosecutor. We've always had this position over the years. It's a liaison between us and the courts. This individual will take, has the responsibility of keeping our court schedule in line, having coordination with the DA's office, able to bring evidence down as well as discovery, keeps track of all witness statements and victim statements. So, over the past few years, we've gone through some transition, and this last one, Officer Collins was in the position. He has since resigned from the position of responsibility as a prosecutor. He, since giving that up, Officer Dizago has stepped up. He's been doing this position for, on and off, for about six months now. He's been doing a great job, and I would like to have him appointed as our prosecutor. He's been doing the position for well over a year and a half now, actually, as the Assistant Prosecutor. He has actually taken the position and already, in the short few weeks that I've assigned him, and already has changed a lot for streamlining it, and I couldn't be happier with his performance. So, I'd like to request that he be appointed as prosecutor for the Stowe Police Department.
Denise, do you have any comments on that one?
No, I support the recommendation.
Do we have any questions from the board?
Ellen has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ellen?
I'm just, I think it's great, thank you, Officer, Officer Dizago, for stepping up. But Chief, I know that you said you're a little bit shorthanded, and I'm wondering, does Officer Dizago also serve as a, what, if not insulting, but for a regular term as well, or a regular position as well, as he on the street, or doing usual shifts as well?
Yep. So, this is actually an added assignment on top of your normal patrol officer responsibilities. So, he'll still be responsible for handling calls for service, responding to emergency 911 calls. Does not take him out of the rotation at all. He still has to respond as a patrol officer. This is just an additional added responsibility that he is taking on.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Megan, any questions? Courtney, Jim?
I'm pleased to see Luke take on this responsibility. I'm sure he's going to be great. I just want to remark that I'm shocked that it was six years ago that we appointed him. It seems like yesterday, but I'm glad to see that he is stepping up and getting this additional responsibility.
I thought it said seven in here.
Starting his seventh year, so it will be six years in April.
Yep. I remember when we hired him, it was, you know, I was involved in the original interviews, and he's, he's been a great addition to the department. He's always got a smile on his face and heck of a nice guy.
So, Mr. Chairman, I take it you're ready for a motion?
If I can have a motion, then please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Luke Dizago as a Police Prosecutor for the Town of Stowe Police Department for the remainder of a two-year term expiring June 30th, 2021, and subject to reappointment thereafter.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And I see Megan and Ellen have voted aye. And then
Thank you, Luke.
Thank you, Luke.
And congratulations, Luke.
Thank you, Luke.
And now we can go on to the second appointment that you're asking for, Mike.
Yes. So, with the recent movement of myself being promoted, there are gaps in our supervisory and leadership roles. One of these gaps is the position of Lieutenant. It hasn't been filled in a while, but Sergeant Train has stepped up, and we worked together over the past year to help lead and supervise this department and get us going in the direction that we, that we want to go in. The Lieutenant is the executive officer of the department. It is an outside-of-the-union position. However, this, since, like Ellen stated earlier, this position is still in patrol and is still responding to calls, is still responding to emergency calls for service. But they also are going to be in charge of completing any internal affairs complaints, overseeing operations. My expectation for Darren would be also to get us in line with certification and accreditation, which is a huge undertaking, and he's already started that process. Darren has been with the town since 1991. He started as a dispatcher, moving up to patrol officer and our Dare Officer, and he was promoted to the rank of Sergeant. And he was the Senior Sergeant responsible for coordinating our training, scheduling our fleet maintenance. He is now taking over the role of already making sure that some of our equipment that requires certification is certified. He did take over as Acting Chief for a period of a month and a half. And right now, he does all of our work schedule, and he assigns any sort of assignments that the officers need. Darren's really stepped up in his role as a leader for the department and is definitely an ally to me, and we've been able to work together very closely. I think I said it before to you, Selectmen, that I've worked with Darren for my whole career. In the past year, I don't think I've gone a day without talking to him now, but we talk pretty much every single day. So, we're definitely in close contact, and I think it's an important part to have that succession training going on, where the next guy underneath you has that ready to take over. And this is just going to be one of those steps that we need to do as a department to continue us going forward. So, I would really appreciate that, like I said, I'm requesting that Darren be appointed to do the position of Lieutenant. This position, he was the only one qualified for it. We needed a supervisor for so, for as many years as he's been a Sergeant, and he is definitely the, my choice for position of Police Lieutenant. Any questions?
Denise?
No, I have reviewed all the documentation regarding this promotion, and I am comfortable with this appointment.
We have any questions from the board? Jim?
Could I just remark that during the events of last spring, Patriot's Day weekend, when the Chief was suddenly suspended, I worked very closely with Darren at that point. I was very impressed with him and with his willingness and readiness to step up when needed. The only good thing that I can remember from Patriot's Day weekend in 2020 was getting to know Darren better and the respect that I got for how he fulfills his duties, and I think he's going to be a great Lieutenant.
Courtney?
It's hard to beat that.
Sorry.
It's quite all right. I'm delighted to
Megan, Ellen, any comments, questions?
I just have to say, I still stumble when I say Sergeant Train, because I still think of him as our great Dare Officer Train. No disrespect intended at all, so now I'm going to get used to Lieutenant, and he's been on the force since we moved to town, so I'm thrilled. He deserves every bit of it.
Are you ready for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
I, I've just got one thing to say is, I've known Darren probably for over 20 years. My kids still remember him from the Dare program. I think he probably knows more kids in this town through the Dare program than any other police officer. And I think it was true community policing, you know? Both my daughters still remember him, remember him fondly, and, you know, they got along with him very well. And also to Jim's point, you know, he's been a team player all the way along. He actually called me to tell me about our issues back in April, and he handled it very professionally, and he stepped up when we needed him. He was the Senior Sergeant, and I think it'll be, it'll be a great addition to the depart, or a great promotion for him. So, I'm very happy with it.
Ready for a motion?
Now, I'm willing to take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Darren Train as a Police Lieutenant for the Town of Stowe Police Department for a term expiring June 30th, 2021, and subject to reappointment thereafter.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And I see Megan and Ellen have their hands up, so they have voted aye.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Solisi, and I keep wanting to say acting, because it's been so long.
Thank you, Chief.
I'm still getting used to it, too. It's been, it's been a week and a half, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have lighting for Autism Awareness Month. I think that Kevin Whalen was going to ask for this. Is Kevin on by any chance?
Quite frankly, this may be something that's just done this meeting every year. This was on the agenda before Maureen left, so I assumed it was just a standard practice that you go through this.
It has been done at least the last two or three years.
Yep.
They, they light up the building blue for Autism Awareness Month, and I have no problem moving forward on this. And just, you know, I guess it's possible under present conditions that Kevin doesn't intend to do it, but in case he does, I think it's a great thing.
Yep.
I'm happy to continue the tradition.
Megan, Ellen, your thoughts?
Yeah, I think it's great.
So, if, even though Kevin's not here, what we could probably provisionally do is make a motion that if he wants to light up Pompo the way he has in the past, it's acceptable? Is everybody good with that concept?
Yep.
All right. Jim?
My only pro, it's Kevin and his wife, but I can't remember his name, or her name, but I'll just do Kevin. I move to allow Kevin Whalen to light up the Poppa City Community Center building blue and do whatever they have done in previous years for Autism Awareness Month this April, 2021.
I think that it had to be done with the building inspector to make sure that everything was cool.
And with the understanding that he will coordinate with the building inspector and obtain the inspector's approval.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 And Megan and Ellen vote aye. Next up is the Board of Selectmen's annual report. It was drafted up by Phoebe, and I'm just going to start by saying I think Phoebe did a great job on it. It makes us look really good. But I've read through it. I don't know if comments on the town, or the Board of Selectmen's 2020 annual report?
I have one comment. Go ahead, Ellen.
No, go Courtney. Go ahead.
I am sorry to make any critique of this nicely written document. That being said, in the first paragraph, the verb strive or strives is used twice fairly close together, and I would recommend that possibly the second instance be changed to intends, if folks are okay with that, or any other word that's appropriate.
I'm good with intends.
I'm fine with that.
Ellen? I think you're on mute.
Yes, I am. So, I, I have two suggestions. One is on, I think I'm having to scroll on, second page, around the policy discussion, which I'm glad she raised it, but I would like to give credit where credit is due and say, and unfortunately, the way my computer, it took out the original language. So, what I have written now is presented with a number of new policies produced by interim Police Chief Solisi and new Town Administrator Demkoski. The Board approved new procedures for town building and for the police department.
I'm sorry, Ellen, can I, I can't figure out where you are.
I can't either.
It's the, basically, the third paragraph on the second page after the paragraph that ends with Lake Boom.
Okay.
And I think it starts out, "The Board examined what it would take to change their designation from Board of Selectmen to Select Board of"
Okay.
I can't remember exactly how it started, that paragraph. I, I just, I felt like both people brought in multiple policies that really moved us forward, and I thought I would like to give them credit in that. And they were, the original language talked about one particular policy that Chief Solisi brought to us, but he actually brought in several. As, as we know, so did Denise. And so that's, I would just, I thought it would be I mean, yeah, that's, that was my language.
You just want to, want to see it expanded a little bit to make sure that the folks that brought the policies forward get credit for them?
Yes.
I'm, I'm good with that.
I am. It sounded good. I think Phoebe might appreciate if you could send her actual language.
Yes.
Yeah, I would. I wasn't sure what, who to send it to, so I just, I'm bringing it up now, and she, you know, yeah. And then the other area, I was a little concerned about the paragraph, which is a few further around Pine Bluff. I'm concerned about the language and the way we talk about people from out of town causing this trouble is loaded. It's essentially, it's racist. And so I would like to, I suggested we change that paragraph or that sentence to say, "The open but unsupervised Pine Bluff Recreation Area saw an increase in vandalism, leaving trash and creation of unsanitary conditions." Because we, it really wasn't just out-of-towners. It was any number of people who were just going, but there was no supervision of the property, and so that's why we had problems.
I think that's a good point.
I don't, I don't have a problem with the change. You're good with
I'm fine with it.
Good with the change, Megan?
I am, yeah. The one thing I was going to say, Ellen, about the policies, which I totally agree with, I feel like my head's a little muddled with dates, so I just want to make sure that, I don't know how much stuff happened in January. I feel like we've been approving a lot of policies. I don't know. Do you know what I mean? So, like, whatever we put in there, let's just make sure that we had approved those policies. Because my gut reaction was, oh, we have a new Police Chief, and then had to remind myself that this is the 2020 report.
Right. Well, we know, I mean, I think, I think actually, both policies from the police department were before January. I know the transgender one's the other one. I can't remember.
The other one was the use of force policy that was around the summertime, I think.
It was earlier, right?
Yeah.
So.
And I think Denise proposed some in 2020 and maybe some more in 20, in, in January, but there were at least some in 2020.
Yes, there were.
Yeah, no, 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 there definitely were. I just wanted to say that I was a little muddled on the dates.
Yeah.
So, Ellen, actually, if you want to send that to me, I made Courtney's change, and I can add yours in for Phoebe.
Do we have any other comments or? I think overall, Phoebe did a fabulous job.
As always, yes.
Yep. She definitely has a knack for writing.
Yes, she does.
So, I think I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the 2020 annual report for the Board of Selectmen as amended for inclusion in the 2020 Town of Stowe report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I see Megan and Ellen are aye also.
Can I ask a question, just, just when we're talking about the town report? Who's, is it, is it, is it the Selectmen's sort of responsibility to make sure that report gets done, or is it really?
No, it falls under the Selectmen's office.
Because I guess my question is, there's some of the reports that, we've just been, a couple of funds that came up recently that are pretty incomplete in terms of reports, so I would just encourage funds to name who their people are on the boards and what their, the balance of their funds are. There are some that seem to be less complete than others. So, that was just a request.
Okay.
I don't know where this ended, so I'm sending, I'm sending it now.
That's fine. I know Phoebe's collecting them. I'll review them, and, you know, it may not be for this year depending, but I would like to boost our annual report anyways and make it a little more robust with some additional town information. But I can certainly look into those.
Thanks.
All right. At this point, the next item up for discussion is Discussion of a Covenant for Plantation Apartments and Stowe Elderly Housing Corporation, with Mark Jones as ZBA Chair. And at this point, because of a potential conflict, because my wife is on the Board of Stowe Elderly Housing Corporation, I will be recusing myself.
Yeah, I'm also going to be recusing myself because my wife acts as Recording Secretary for SEHC and is technically an employee.
And just for the record, I will be taking minutes for this portion of the meeting.
So, and I will be turning over chairmanship or, or chairing of this meeting to Courtney at this point.
Thank you, Tom. So, first of all, so, there has apparently been a lack of noticing for, or, or giving notice to parties involved in a, in the neighborhood abutting plantation apartments. And so we will discuss this tonight and likely continue to, and have this on a future agenda. Going to ask the Town Administrator, Denise, if you have comments on the covenant?
So, I don't have specific comments at this time. We do have Town Council. Barbara is on as well as Mark. I think they would probably be best to discuss the proposed amendments to the covenant and to discuss, you know, how we came to this point.
Sounds good. I can't see Mark from where I'm sitting. Are you there, Mark Jones?
Yes, yes.
I am present. I can briefly describe the circumstances, which I also did in brief describe in my narrative memorandum to the Board. So, very briefly, Stowe Elderly Housing Corporation created a affordable housing building and program starting in '82, and they granted a covenant to the town as to use of the private way and offering to limit their activity in particular ways, and also agreed to maintain their way on their own and to not ask the town to take on private ways and public streets. Since then, the town has granted money to the Elderly Housing Corporation, seed money to produce more housing. And the Zoning Board of Appeals received a petition to undertake that expanded affordable housing. And we, as the ZBA, agreed to a decision, and then later on amended the decision. And at this point, in order for that decision to be implemented And at this point, in order for that decision to be implemented, it's necessary for the existing covenant to be either modified or rescinded. And so the ZBA reviewed the existing covenant with the Stowe Elderly Housing Corporation representatives and also in the presence of abutters council over the course of 2020, in the last half of the year, and agreed to a proposal for the consideration of the selectmen. And so that's what brings us to this point, to align the covenant with the decision. And the ZBA recommends that the current proposal be considered and adopted by the selectmen on behalf of the town. And I can describe some of the details of the covenant to the extent that people have particular questions. I did survey them ever so briefly in my memorandum.
Thank you. So I read the amended covenant and the new covenant and found them, my non-legal mind finds them sane and, I would say, reasonable. And it appears to me that it is sort of like a memorandum of understanding, only more so, a little bit more robust or stringent or something, and that it's a mechanism to have a conversation and a means of working or managing the situation. And that's the point of the document, more or less. Is there, let's see, I don't know where to go next. Does Megan? You're still mute?
Hi. No, I was trying to get there. I had a quick question about the land swap that's being proposed. And so I know that it's, I believe that it's the piece of land that is currently owned by Plant, Mark, you're going to have to stop and tell me if I'm wrong in speaking. I think this is what I've garnered from this, is that there is a piece of property that is currently owned by Plantation Two that's being swapped with a piece of property that's currently owned by Plantation One in order to allow the build-out to happen the way that you all want it to. And I, one thing I was wondering is, is part of the issue with the land swap that is problematic for people is that there are now going to be buildings on it that are going to impact the abutters that were not going to be there before? Does that make sense?
It is, it's, yes, the land swap is desirable in order to create the new Plantation Two project.
Okay.
And in order to undertake that land swap, they need, the current covenant needs to be released or perhaps modified by instating a revised covenant or covenants. That part is true. And it is the case that there has been litigation by abutters. And their complaint is that they might be affected by the septic system and possibly have some influence affected by greater traffic on one of the, on the private right of way.
Okay. Okay.
Other questions? Ellen, anything?
I, as I'm coming to a re, new into this in terms of the specifics, I really appreciate your memo, Mark, to sort of highlight the key things. I've been, I'm sad that it's taken so long to get to Plantation Two. I think it's so overdue and how much we need it. I know more people whose parents have been on that waitlist for an awful long time. So I am totally a hundred percent behind the ZBA. If you guys agree with it, I agree with it.
Are there other people present who would like to comment or ask questions?
Just the general comments, I can. Part of the rationale for the covenant is to give the opportunity for the towns' poll and maybe abutters to have a comment and complaint and appreciation opportunity outside of the ZBA process. And so it's, it is very desirable that we have that opportunity fully enabled. And so that's the desirability of making it possible with a little bit more notice to the abutters, let them have their say and to have the selectmen hear that.
Understood.
That is really the larger purpose of the covenant in general, to give an opportunity outside the ordinary zoning and ZBA 40B process.
So, so does that mean that we are going to have a formal, public hearing at some point? Or is it, it's just that that's what this meeting is, an opportunity for people to comment? Maybe Barbara can clarify. Sure, thank you. There doesn't need to be a formal public hearing, but there certainly, you know, does need to be a sort of open process with the opportunity for there to be input from, you know, abutters or really anyone else in town who would want to comment on the covenant that the selectmen would be entering into. So not the formality of the hearing, but certainly the spirit of public process. Thank you.
So we would not, this would not be something we would, you would advise us to vote on now without that public input?
Correct, yes.
Yep.
I mean, the, yes, and thank you for bringing that up. That would be the reason to start the conversation tonight, continue it till your next meeting, so that there's opportunity for input. And then the board can, whenever it feels it has enough information, vote on what's been proposed or what's been proposed as amended, to the extent the board, you know, has anything else it wants to add.
So just checking, do we have time on our next agenda for the continued conversation?
Yes, we, uh, yes, we have two, tentatively two public hearings that night, but we can certainly make room for it if we need to.
Very good. Is there anyone else present who would like to make a comment or ask a question tonight? So we're looking at continuing this conversation on our next meeting, which I believe is February 23rd, in order to give further notice for questions in the future. Any takers for comment or question? Looking like there are none. I think we can move on from this item to our next agenda item. Thank you, everybody, for attending.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Barbara. Thank you, goodbye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Next item on the agenda is a discussion to authorize deficit spending for FY 2021 snow and ice removal pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31D. I will, I will ask Denise for her comments and thoughts on this.
Yes, one second, I'm sorry. Just finishing up those notes. And where's my information? Okay, so after Sunday storm, just this past Sunday, we got approximately $25,000 remaining in the snow and ice budget. Obviously, the crew is out now. There is another storm expected this weekend. I do not believe the $25,000 will last us until your next meeting. So I am recommending you take the necessary vote to authorize deficit spending, so we can finish our winter accordingly.
And I take it the FinCom is, will be voting on that also?
It's not required.
I've never had a Finance Committee vote on that, so.
I thought.
It, it used to be required, but then there was an amendment in something, 2013, that that's no longer required.
Okay, just this board.
Just this board, okay.
Be ready for a motion.
Any comments from Megan, Ellen? Nope. Courtney? Nope. Jim?
Make the road safe.
Make the road safe, it's a good thing. It's a good thing. I'm ready for a motion then.
Mr. Chair, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31D, I move to allow deficit spending of the fiscal year 2021 snow and ice account.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Megan and Ellen are aye. Next up, Town Administrator Report and Overview of a Preliminary FY 2022 Budget.
Okay, I am going to start with my regular report. And first, I misspoke a moment ago. We do not have two public hearings at our next meeting. That's the following meeting. So at our next meeting, we have the all-boards financial outlook discussion. So we will certainly have room on that agenda. A reminder that tomorrow night is the Stowe Acres Forum and the visioning on the future of that property. It will take place at 7:30 via Zoom. Information is on our website. People can find the flyer. We sent out a press release. So it is not necessarily a question and answer. It's going to be information presented about what the possibilities are for that property. So this board is aware, last week, we received word that the ABCC approved the retail liquor license for Nans Market. So we promptly released the license that you all approved for them, pending ABCC authorization. Last, it was a snow day, so last Wednesday. So they picked up their license last Tuesday, and I assume they got right to selling. They were very happy to have that approval. A note for anyone that might be watching or listening, the Town of Stowe has had email problems over the last several weeks. There have been some days when emails just did not come into the town servers at all. And then last week, we converted to a new system, and there have been some initial hiccups. If people are waiting on responses from employees, board members, and they have not received them, feel free to send a kind follow-up because the likelihood is it did not make it to us. We appreciate everyone's patience, and I think we've crossed over the difficult point right now. But I'm still getting people saying, "I haven't heard back from you." And come to find out, it's during those sort of few days that we did not have any email access. This morning, we had a lengthy pre-construction meeting with the state regarding the Gleesondale Bridge project. The project is expected to begin next month with the different crews starting to mobilize on the site. Particularly, the utilities will start mobilizing down there. They are working on setting up their schedule. And once we have a definitive start date and their schedule, we will put word out through social media, the newspaper, and a town-wide phone call. There will be, during the 15 to 18-month project, there will be times when there will have to be detours in place, mostly from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And we will make sure folks are notified in advance of that. But just beware that people will start seeing some crews down there doing some tree work, and as I said, the utilities first. COVID, so, once again, we have spent an enormous amount of time discussing COVID over the last two weeks. On the call with the governor's office again today, they are reiterating that they are only receiving 104,000 vaccines a week, but the demand is more than four times that. They are planning to announce two more large-scale mass vaccination sites in the upcoming days. The mass sites are handling 55,000 appointments weekly. So if you do the math, the mass sites are handling 55,000 appointments alone, and then you have another 50,000 that they're trying to spread out amongst pharmacies, doctors' offices, et cetera. They are encouraging regional efforts to vaccine, period. They do not want, nor do they have the capability, nor will they authorize 351 towns to set up their own clinics. That is an absolute, they will not allow that. So they are working on efforts to increase the vaccines. Their goal, as well as all of the 351 towns' goal, is to put vaccines in people's arms. However, they feel the most effective and efficient way is through their mass vaccination sites or through the local pharmacies that are now coming online. That being said, I also had a meeting today with the 17 communities that make up the Nashoba Area Board of Health, along with our legislative delegation. There was more than 30 people in attendance for trying to find a solution for our regional area in what my Berlin counterpart calls the Vaccination Desert, which is sort of the Route 2, 495 area. The state is aware of it. They recognize that there is a concern here. We are trying to put together our own sort of mass vaccination site and hoping that the state will support that and move forward with it. The state is still maintaining that their top priorities are the highest impacted communities, and unfortunately, that is not this area. But we are advocating for, on behalf of this area. Our legislators are advocating on behalf of the area. And we are, I can assure you, we are doing everything we can to ensure that our residents have access to vaccines as quickly and safely as possible. Nobody wants to see our seniors or our residents having to go to Gillette or Fenway Park to have this. Unfortunately, right now, that's, those are some of the only options. I know, I've spoken with Kate Hogan. She was calling local pharmacies to try and find out what solutions are here. Jamie Eldridge and, I forget the representative and where she's from. They spearheaded a letter on behalf of these 17 communities to the governor's office and to DPH, advocating on our behalf. So it is not without effort. It is not without numerous and countless hours of attempts. This is the, you know, not the first time I've met with my 17 other counterparts. We meet regularly and have these discussions. Unfortunately, the message is the same at the end of the day. There were no vaccines. They are just not here. I'm not sure if any of you caught the news yesterday morning. The Town of Sharon was promised vaccines. They had taken names, they scheduled clinics, and then they were told there was zero vaccines available to them. They had to call their residents, they had to cancel those clinics. And that is one of the reasons why I've been very hesitant to talk about this publicly, is I don't want to give false hope. I don't want to say, "We'll start taking names, we'll put people on a list," because that may never come to fruition. And we don't want to take the chance that someone is going to give up an opportunity to get vaccinated elsewhere, if it may never happen here. The state is advocating that when you can get vaccinated, whatever vaccination you can get, the soonest, get it. Do not pass up an opportunity to become vaccinated. So I will continue to work on behalf of the town, on behalf of the residents, to get something to fruition in this area. I just cannot guarantee it, unfortunately, at this point. Questions on that before I move on?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say thank you, Denise, for all of the work that you have been doing behind the scenes on this and with the Board of Health as well. I, it is, I was thrilled to see that letter that the reps put out. I thought it was thoughtful, and I'm glad that they are working on getting us the vaccines in this vaccination desert. And I know that, I just, I know all the hard work that everybody's been putting in on this, and we're just very, very appreciative of it.
Thank you.
I agree. Jim?
Two comments and a suggestion. Number one, thank you for the detailed explanation of your efforts on that. And I just want to say personally, I'm perfectly satisfied that you and our delegation and other local officials are doing everything they can to remedy this situation. It's unfortunate, but I, I know that work is going on, and I agree with the way you've approached it in trying not to raise false hopes. Second comment, I can't tell you how happy I am to hear that work is going to start on the Gleesondale Bridge. That is like Christmas and New Year's again. And, and that leads to my suggestion. In the past, DOT has sent a team out here for public forums. They have been very effective. They clearly have done this before. And it's a good chance for people to get their questions answered. I don't remember when the last one was, I want to say 16 or 17. But perhaps with this new threshold, we could see if we could get that to occur again.
Even if they zoom in?
Even if they zoom in.
Yeah, I can certainly reach out. They seemed very willing to do whatever was necessary. They talked about site visits. You know, there was some disconnect with some of the utility companies that they're going to work on, some question around tree removal that they're going to work on here. But I think they are just as anxious to get this project going as well. So I will certainly check in with our project manager and see if that would be something that they could do for us.
Can I just add on to that, and I, I hope you saw Bill was cheering, Bill is here. He's a local resident. Do we have a particular list of all the Gleesondale area residents that are, I mean, I just, you know, not everybody sees Facebook, not everybody's on the website, but I just want to make sure particularly those, the neighborhood. Maybe we'll just put Bill with a sign on and walk around the neighborhood.
I was going to say, now that Bill knows, everybody down there will know.
So I just, I mean, because they have already had to put up with a lot, and I, I mean, I think they'll be thrilled to hear the news. I'm sure Ann will include it in the paper, but I, in terms of the disruptions and stuff, it would be nice to have a, you know, something we can do to sort of just have, make sure that they're on the first list of getting updates. I mean, the whole town doesn't need to, it won't be impacting me, I'm on the opposite side of town. So I just want to be thinking about the Gleesondale neighborhoods as that fifteen-month process goes on.
Yes, so we could certainly do a localized call just to that area. I do think it's important for everyone to know because it is a heavily commuted area. Actually, the town of Hudson participated in our call this morning because we need to make plans for mutual aid because when the times are that the bridge will be inaccessible, we have to have their mutual aid for police-fire incidents. So we will certainly make sure that they are notified. And I know not everyone has access to the website, but I do plan to have sort of an ongoing schedule as we get information about work, so that people can see when it's expected. As of right now, so the utility work, I think, was supposed to be starting in March, and they're looking at June or July to really start construction. They plan to have the demo of the first side, and forgive me because I don't remember which side they are starting on, done by the fall, and then over the winter, do the second half of the demolition. So they really plan to move along pretty quickly once they start and get this going. But we will make sure everyone is updated and informed as best we can.
That's great, thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Been a long time coming.
Okay. Yeah, onto the preliminary budget overview. So I'll be quite honest, I haven't had time to really do a lot because I've been meeting with departments still, right up until this afternoon. But here's what I can tell you. Going through this budget process, it has given me an opportunity to provide what I would consider an honest assessment of the town functions and determine what has been and has not been working and what changes might be necessary. My final budget recommendation will have cost implications for fiscal twenty-two. It's important to note that some departments have, that the needs of some departments have not been kept up with for operational needs or staffing levels. Not as a criticism, because the town has done an excellent job of being conservative with their budgeting, which has limited the expenditures and increased the unused levy capacity, but it has created other operational issues. There have been resources lacking, specifically what I've determined to be within the library, the highway and cemetery, and obviously, human resources, which I've talked about since I started here. So I will be recommending adding some additional staff and different levels to those departments. Budget requests came in as a total up four point one seven percent over last year. Now, obviously, those are budget requests. There have been some changes made above what has come in for requests. For instance, on the police budget, we've negotiated the chief's contract since his budget, and there are some contractual obligations that we will include. We will include some mental health training, if you will, that was not in his original budget request. So some things have been added that were not requested. I have not received Neshova school numbers. They have said they plan to stay around two to two and a half percent because, quite frankly, Bolton and Lancaster have said they will not accept anything other than that. And we do not know our health insurance figures yet, which are two of our largest ticket items. On top of all of that, we have almost a million dollars in non-CPC capital requests. Looking at the list of what was requested for capital, all of those needs need to be addressed, and if not this year, then next. While that is a very large number, we just can't afford to keep kicking the can down the road when it comes to vehicles and equipment. The cost to maintain and fix equipment rises each year that it's sort of being kept on the road when it's past its useful life, and it then costs us more money in the long run. So I will be recommending significant amount, working with capital, that we do need to invest in some of that because it's not going to go away. I do plan to give my first recommendation to the Finance Committee by the end of this week, while we wait to fine-tune sort of our state, state numbers, the school numbers, and our insurance figures. In the positions that I plan to recommend, I do plan to recommend an HR director in the form of an Assistant Town Administrator position. We are seriously lacking in HR, and meeting with every department going through their budgets, that was a recurring theme, they need help with some evaluations, we need help rolling out the classification plan. There's just so much on an HR level that I do not have the bandwidth in a normal week to do that on top of everything else that needs to be done. I think the employees that I've spoken to, welcome having someone in here that they can go to, that can assist with collective bargaining issues, you know, performance evaluations, and quite frankly, disciplinary actions. So I think that is a much-needed position. I will be recommending additional staff in the library. I believe it was a circulation position. Our library is about three to four positions down than all of our counterparts in our surrounding towns. After meeting with Tina, she's confident that, for now, adding this one extra position will help at least get them up to where they should be, and then see what's needed going forward. And then lastly, after my meetings with the cemetery and the highway department, it's a whole issue we need to work out. There's this agreement that the cemetery falls under the highway, but the highway is not involved in the cemetery putting together their budget or how the money is spent. I think that's a larger project. But in the short term, Steve has asked for an additional laborer with the understanding that part of the week will be spent dealing with the cemetery as in helping GH with cutting the grass, doing maintenance. Because, quite frankly, just cutting the grass is taking, you know, four or five days a week, and then nothing else is getting done. Additionally, I have supported at this point adding a sort of summer laborer, part-time, to help in the cemetery from Memorial Day-ish through the fall. Getting the cemetery ready for Memorial Day, and then making sure someone's there for leaf cleanup because it's really, it's just too much for one person. So I think those are some areas that we need to plan for, we need to expand the services that we're providing. On the expense side of things, not too many increases, everything seems to be the status quo. Departments did a wonderful job with their budget requests and really staying level-funded on expenses as best they can, or minimal increases. And all of the increases that have been requested, shouldn't say all. The majority of the increases that have been requested are utilities, service contracts, all of things that are contractual that, quite frankly, we have no say in. So I will be putting, so once I sort of get my final recommendation, I will be putting all of the documents, all of the budget requests from every individual department on our website. Folks will be able to see what was requested, they will be able to read the cover letters that were sent in by all the departments and all of the necessary backups. So if there's any questions going into town meeting or with the Finance Committee, everyone can be informed ahead of time and be prepared with, you know, whatever questions they may have. So that is my overview for you tonight, and I'm happy to take questions if you have them.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
That's a comment.
I know, it was a lot.
Ellen, Megan, questions, comments? Jim?
No questions, it sounds great, and I think you're right, we, that HR person is going to be a very welcome addition.
Good, good overview. I'm a, I'm a detailed guy, so I'll wait till I see the details.
I, I thought it was a very good overview. Some of the issues that you discussed are not a surprise to me, and I, I'm glad that you reached those conclusions. One or two, I'm, I'm very interested in, it sounds right. But I'm interested in seeing the details of what you've got, and you're right about the capital. Although it isn't as high as it's been in some years, but it's, it's high. So thank you.
Can I ask a quick question about vehicles, Denise?
Yes.
Do we, so I, we buy the vehicles outright, is that the plan?
Yes.
Is it because we have to, because they have to be fitted out, or?
So it depends, I mean, most of them, we sort of run into the ground, so we keep them for, you know, long past their life expectancy. You know, you, you can't lease police cruisers or things like that, we just put too many miles on them.
I get it, oh, okay.
So.
That was, that was my question, was whether leasing was an option, but I guess that is not.
No. And, and with, so with vehicles and police cruisers, last year, a police cruiser was not supported for the police department, and so now they need two because there really needs to be, and I'm a strong supporter of replacing a cruiser every year, because if you get behind, again, they, they don't, they don't turn back in life expectancy, they just keep getting older, and then we pour money into them and fixing them and replacing parts. So those vehicles especially, it, it's good to have a healthy rotation and just know that every year, you need to replace a cruiser.
And a lot of the things with the cruisers, it's not necessarily the miles, it's the number of hours that they end up on, with them on. You know, it, because, you know, they're idling in various places, they have to keep them going, things like that. So it's, they, they may not drive them around as far, but they've got an awful lot of hours on them.
Megan, my memory is that last year, the Highway Superintendent proposed leasing or something like leasing with some fairly expensive highway equipment. And we weren't ready to do it last year. You wind up paying a lot more over the life of the lease than you would if you just suck it up and pay for it. That being said, I remember walking away from it thinking that if we're ever going to get into leasing of equipment, it might, that, that might be an area to, to look at.
And so, that's common. You know, in, in Groveland, we leased a Bombardier Snow Sidewalk Plow, and it was a five-year lease, and then at the end of it, you know, we bought it for a dollar. You know, that's great for those types of things, town meeting is required to authorize any lease purchases. I think the, the one that might have been discussed last year was the, may have been the Street Sweeper.
Yes.
And we've decided to abandon that altogether and bring in a contractor because it will be cheaper to do it that way than buying and maintaining equipment.
Yeah, and I think the sticker shock with the, the cruiser, I understand what you're saying, Denise, and I think it totally makes sense to replace them on that end. I think that people drive by the police station and see three or four cars sitting there at a time and sort of question, you know, why do, and I, I had heard this from people last year, like, why do we need to replace it if they're always just sitting there? But I think that that, that might just be, you know, education of the public a little bit more on that.
And that's, that's said in every town, so I'm not surprised that that was a comment.
Certainly, the way a vehicle could get used, it needs to perform very well for the safety of our officers and also for the safety of the public. So it's pretty important not to be driving a clunker down the road.
You know, the thing is, some of the older cars, I'm sure, they, they end up just out at a detail or something like that. Where it's not, they're not expected to end up in any kind of high-speed chase, or if it dies on them, it isn't an issue. You know, it's, it's a detail, man. But, you know, it's, it's, for the trade-in value that we'd be able to get for some of them, which I've seen some of them, you know, get offered two hundred and fifty dollars. You know? What, what's the point? You know, if it still runs and you can use it for certain things, keep it, you know, so.
Megan's got a comment on that.
Oh, no, I was just going to apologize for sending us down that path.
No, no. Although I will say, you know, police cruisers especially, it's not so much the cost of the vehicle, but then to equip it. You know, so you think, like, the cost of the vehicle is, is reasonable, but then to put all of the equipment in is another twenty or so thousand dollars, and it just drives up the price. I will just mention two things that I forgot in my time. So we have hired a new Assistant Town Planner. He starts, he is starting on Tuesday. So we are very happy to have him coming on board, and I think that will be a great addition back to the Planning Department. And at your next meeting, I expect to have a recommendation for an executive assistant. So my expectation is to extend an offer tomorrow, and hopefully, we'll have that ready to go for the next meeting, so.
And that should take a little load off you.
Yes, it will, especially on Agenda Day, because I, I get so worked up that I have so much going on, and then I have to put the packet together, so it will be good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything, you're done on there?
Nope, I'm good.
So we can go to liaison reports, and start with you, Jim, this time.
I don't have very much, everything met, but they didn't, they were not complicated meetings. FinCom met a very short meeting, they're just getting their, some, their selves together to start their department meetings. Big, big change is having the Town Administrator at the Finance Committee meetings, which I think is going to be very good for everyone, except the Town Administrator, but it'll be good for the committee. Capital planning, we have our meeting scheduled, and we have our first substantive meeting this Thursday. We are meeting with Building and, and Highway, I believe, no, Fire, sorry. And I believe some of the bigger requests that were with Building and Highway. And after we meet with them, I'll be able to give you a little bit more detail. And I, there was a third one, and now I cannot remember. Oh, Library Building Committee met and approved the RFR, which was a very big step in the right direction. There is some sentiment, and this is just me talking informally, keeping you guys informed. There is some sentiment by the Director and a few members of the committee that we really have to look very much at maximizing the efficient use of the existing space. And Denise had brought this up after an interesting discussion, it, it got some traction. It is in the RFR for the consultant to take a look at. And I am hopeful, fingers crossed, that ultimately, that helps keep the cost of that project down, yet gives them the space that they need.
Jim, just a quick question on Finance, did you, is there a position for the Audit Advisory Committee coming to the Board? Or do we vote on that, or is that just on the Finance Committee?
That came up, and I don't remember what happened.
So, and I wish, I wish you brought it up a few minutes ago. So Mark Jones is still sitting in that seat because he was appointed last year by the Board of Selectment and Finance to serve until June thirtieth. I have spoken to him, he does plan to resign, to give up the seat. He has not done that yet. So once he resigns, Erica has mentioned that she has a candidate that she'd like to put forward for a joint appointment. So I had asked Linda to follow up with Mark and see if he was sending a letter, but I will do so tomorrow.
And, and now that Denise reminds me, yeah, they, they are ready to move on that as, as soon as the resignation is in.
And to your point, it will be a joint appointment. That will be coming as, as soon as we can. All set, Jim?
I am.
Courtney?
I think I really don't have much to report.
All right.
With meetings, but.
Ellen?
Yeah, this is the week where all my meetings are this week, so. But I did have Maya, my impromptu liaison is talking to our town clerk about creating a volunteer night to try and encourage more people to join committees, whether as appointed boards or even running for office. So we have a tentative plan for the early March. We're going to work with Jonathan Daisy to make it available on various platforms live, where we would invite a representative from basically every committee in town to. um, where we would invite a representative from basically every committee in town to um have, present information in advance and then do a, a short little presentation on why they should, you know, why they like being on the committee and, and um sort of how they, maybe to show people how they got onto the committee, like your neighbor pulled you on or whatever. Um, so we're just hoping to get a little more energy going. Um, Linda used to do this pretty regularly, but she's been a little overwhelmed the last few years with elections and everything. So, uh, we want to get it going again for at least every couple of years. And in some way, Zoom might be a safer way to, or Zoom-ish might be a safer way to do it because then people don't have to show up in town building and have, be steered at. So hoping to encourage more people to come. More, more on that next time.
Sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, thanks for doing that.
Yeah, thank you. Megan?
Um, the planning board is meeting tonight, so I am out there. Um, the town hall restoration committee gave a, this presentation to CPC last night. Um, and then the only news out of Nishoba is that, um, the superintendent, um, resigned last week. Um, she'll be there till the end of the school year, um, but that allows time for the school committee to um appoint a new superintendent. So my guess is they'll start working on that soon.
Excellent, and I'll make things short, and I don't have anything. One, um, next, we've got a couple sets of minutes. First set is our minutes of, um, January twenty-sixth, the open session. Do we have any comments or corrections on those? Megan, Ellen, you guys good? Good?
Good.
Good? I guess I'm ready for a motion then. I was good with them.
I move we accept the minutes of January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one as of, or uh, as drafted.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And Megan and Ellen have voted aye. Next, we have the minutes of January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. The um executive session minutes that uh we have actually concluded the, it was for the negotiations for, yeah, Megan?
Um, yeah, what, so one of the lines, um, I am attributed to saying something that I think Ellen actually said.
Bottom of page one.
It's the bottom of page one. It's the, the one that starts in the same section. It was not me that said that, it was Ellen.
Okay.
And other than that, it's great.
And what we'll do is we'll take two votes on this, first to approve the minutes, and then because these are executive session minutes, well, we can vote to uh release them afterwards. Um, I don't think that, uh, you know, given that we finished the contract negotiations, Denise, correct me if I'm wrong, but these are probably fine to be released at this point.
They are. Uh, the contract was put online the next day, so everything that was discussed that's in the contract has already been made public.
All right. Uh, should we do it in one vote, uh, approve and release?
Yes, you could certainly do that.
All right, why don't we do that?
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the meeting minutes of the executive session of the January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one executive session and to release said minutes to the public.
Second.
Any?
And with amendments.
I thought you said that.
I did say that.
But I seconded.
Any additional uh comments or discussion being done? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And Megan and Ellen vote aye. Correspondence? Um, anybody have any questions or comments about stuff that was in correspondence?
I just had, I just, I mean, it's not a big deal, but when I looked at the flyer about the hearing tomorrow, it, it looked like it's a conservation concert, uh, comment, and I had to find out that MCO and Associates is a housing group. So I just think it was a little misleading. It's all trees, it's open space. It looks like we're talking about just doing open space, even though it's a, um, it's a more of an open discussion. So that was just, it's a little late to change it now. I didn't look at it until this weekend. I just want, I want people to know that we're, there's three, you know, there's multiple things being considered, not just open space.
Um, anybody else? Any co, other comments on correspondence? If not, we get, we have, uh, I'll take a mo, make a, or, does anybody have any comments on anything else? Nope?
Uh, people got a copy of, I did send on the, I guess, the district didn't send us the reservation. As well as the other that she mentioned from the legislators about the COVID advocacy board. But they, uh, you know, I just feel like they deserve some more credit for, for pushing that forward. And done because of our group led by Denise to the area towns pushing that issue. So just want to make sure that was part of the correspondence later.
Yeah, I think it's just great to spend all the time that you did, just so everybody feels comfortable that all,
In case I'm.
Leaves and stones have been turned and moved under.
In case I'm uh willing to entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I hope you're having fun wherever you are, Ellen.
Oh, yeah, down the gate. It's snowing here, too.
Well, that's.